Roll call Madam.
Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bolden.
Present.
Trustee McFatt.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins.
Present.
Trustee Brooks. Mayor Rudolph.
I'm here. Let's stand for our pledge of allegiance, please. So put your hat on. United States of America, and to the great bodies for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Just before we come in, I have a sheet. Uh, Ms. Robin Walker. She hasn't made it in yet, she comes in. Okay, we'll start with Mrs. Millie. Ms. Millie, you have three minutes, uh, Tony Miller will start the time when you open the voice with the person. Good to see you, happy to meet you, Mother State, to you, Mrs. Morgan.
Good evening, everybody. Um, haha, she's gone already? Uh, I guess what I'm referring to is, uh, Ms. E., is she here, is she still working for the village?
I'm glad, Mr., go ahead.
Okay, um, Ms. E. needs to go. She's not running this village properly. Uh, not just in my opinion. I have so much, uh, proof of, uh, what is going on here, that it's not conducive. It is not conducive to this village. I don't understand why she's still here. I'm not even asking the mayor, but I'm asking the trustees. And I'm trying to be civil about it, I'm trying to be nice, I'm trying to be kind, I'm trying to communicate. I like to know, how come, or how can you continue to have this woman who has, uh, taken fifty-four, over fifty-four thousand dollars, and lied on November eighteenth to the world? How do you, how do you, how do you endure that? Trustee, uh, Bill, I'd like to know, did you get that information that you requested?
Uh, yes, I did, I did.
Let me just finish, please, if you don't mind. Um, I'm, uh, gonna be on this with Ms. uh, Ms. E., and also with Ms. Coffee, because I don't understand how you allow these people to still work in this village, and you take away the Chief of Police. I'm gonna also be talking with you, Mr. Miller. I've been talking with, uh, Mr. Saldo, and the other gentleman here, I think he shied away, Mr. Warbeau, but I see you're back. Hmm, okay. But, um, we're gonna be talking a little bit more, do you mind if I call you?
Absolutely, no problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Morgan.
May I be recognized?
Yes, yes, Trustee Jenkins, absolutely.
I did receive, everything that I asked Ms. Eva in the last, um, board meeting, she did give me everything that I requested, and more than she probably wanted to.
I can't hear you, that's it.
And more than she probably wanted to. What I'm going to request now, uh, with, well, she's not here, so I can't request it, but I can request it from just tell you Kelly, because, you know, she happens all of that. And my question is, is why was a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars moved from the special, uh, events account?
I didn't hear that.
A hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars was moved on two-twenty-two from the special events account, into, um, the general fund for payroll, and we were not, it did not come through board approval. So I have a question about that, and I need to know an answer. And so since that hasn't, hasn't occurred, I want this read into the record. I want to see a statement for zero, for two-twenty-two to two, from February, March, and April, reflective of that money going deposited into the payroll, I mean, deposited into the bank account. I need to see it, and I need to see that it went to payroll, and that's exactly where it went. Uh, and I'm looking at the balance, and I'm, I'm questioning a lot of, a lot of things. As of the second, it was a million dollars, not a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. I need to know where did this million dollars come from? And why was the opera money put into this account, it should have been put into a sub-account? That is what is required. Um, Tony Miller, would you please find out if that's what's required of the money? To make sure that it is audited properly, that's what I would like to see.
What accounts, uh?
All right, thank you, thank you, Trustee. Uh, Robin Walker, next person, Ms. Morgan, please, don't yell out.
What account, Trustee, pardon me?
Ms. Walker?
What account? Are you reading that, Frau?
Oh, this is the special, I, I said, this is the special events account. And I wanted to ask, is this the Moses account as well, or do they have a separate account? Ms. Kelly?
The Moses does not have that account.
So everything is going into this one account that we received? Everything from grants, from whatever comes, is going into this one account?
Yes.
So how do you, how do you make sure that everything, how do you know that four-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars was not spent? Uh, it's still there, she told me that it was there, but how do you know? And everything is mixed together, we need to know what is all in this account. And I'm, and now I'm gonna request the audit of the account. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Walker. Good evening, happy to meet you, Mother State, to you as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, a few things, I just wanted to give, uh, first, a big shout-out. I hate that, uh, both of them are gone, but, uh, the prior Chief Wilson, and also, uh, uh, Officer Murphy, they've been coming out, and they've been assisting us a whole lot, hands-on with, with baseball, even though they're not a part of the village, uh, I was just told, but they've still been coming out, assisting and helping and coaching and things like that, so I wanted to give a shout-out to them first, and a big thank you. Also, uh, Ms. E. is not here, so maybe Mayor, I'm hoping, maybe you will have some answers as far as what's going on, updates with the fields.
I went to see the fields today, they've been done, they've been done. I saw Regal Farm today, and, uh, Palmer Park, so the fields have been done. So what I would suggest, there's a little more fine-tuning that needs to be done on those baseball fields. My suggestion would be some of the parents or your volunteers, just take like some still rates, and, and, and kind of rake it out, just move out the infield, some of that nature.
So the question I have is, no, we had called out some people to come there yesterday, because the village couldn't do it, in a timely manner, saying that we got a game coming up, so we called out.
No, okay, I didn't know, I guess I would do it.
Yeah, we called out a contractor to have them start trying to work on that and hurry up and finish it by Friday. So my question is, how is the village gonna reimburse us back that, what? Because the village was supposed to do that, so.
I do the politics, you have to talk to somebody to take the damn information.
So is E. for that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then also, I noticed, I seen the, uh, porta-potties were there, and now they're gone. Does anybody know what, why did they come and get the porta-potties?
I have no idea.
After two days?
Why is, where is Ms. E.? She's the village manager.
Okay.
I'm asking a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Morgan.
You can't answer.
No, I can't, but.
Go ahead, uh, Trustee Bolden.
From what I understand, uh, today, uh, they were, they were only ordered for a certain number of days. They weren't ordered for the entire baseball season or whatever, and they're paying for them daily. From what I gather today.
Okay, so that was what the request was, we need to have those porta-potties out there the whole time, like, who would? Does that make sense, for to have them one day or two days, when the season hasn't even started yet? We need them for the kids to be able to.
Not for the whole season. So that means to be, you know, related again.
So can, can we please take care of that, somebody like ASAP, we need the porta-potties, they'll be there on Friday, kids will be out there. Kids been out there for the last month, we've been asking for them. Okay.
The porta-potties are gone?
Yeah, they were there for two days, and they just took them away.
We got a few seconds.
Uh, also, the water is still not working in concession stand. Ms. Keeley, do you have an answer for that, or know what's going on with, um, with, uh, the water situation?
Ms. Robin, I am not a part of, part of the recs, I have no idea.
All right, you're three minutes, you put that guy off.
Because I know she was there.
Ms. Morgan, let her die off, her timing.
Yeah, that was, in two thousand eighteen, that was the last time I was over the parts.
Okay.
You're talking about the water down at the, uh?
Yes, at the concession stand, at Green Park.
At Green Park, I know that there was something, Aqua came out there trying to figure out something, but I don't think it's anything on the village app. I know Aqua was down there with Clayco the other day trying to figure out something about the water.
Okay.
I don't know the full, you know, nine-one-one on it, I mean, the four-one-one on it.
Because, because the village, because Aqua has been there three times, the village was supposed to have been finding a piece, fixing it. I thought that was done last week, it's still not done, I was just in there.
Well, I don't know.
So can we please make sure that these things are being done? And, uh, Miller, this is why I was asking, to have that, can we speed that along with that, uh, document I had asked you for, is it to you?
I sent the draft to the, I gave a draft.
Again?
What do you mean, again, I gave a draft, the first time.
Yeah, yeah, the memorandum of understanding, which was saying, which is the first.
The memorandum of, uh, understanding, because I, I got that one, and I sent you back.
You didn't send something to me?
Yeah, uh, to Trustee Brooks, and sent you that one back?
I didn't get an email with anything back, did you guys give it, did you guys do a physical document or sent it to me?
Email.
I didn't get an email, but I'll, let me check and see who, if there's, I can check your server, I know I didn't get an email back, but I'll check and I'll let you know.
Okay.
One thing, if I got it.
I'll, I'll email it to you, okay, I'll email it to you.
Okay, yeah, what email address did you send it to?
Uh, he, I sent it to him, and he was supposed to order it to you, so I'll make sure that you get it, I have his email.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you so much, uh, Mrs. Walker.
Okay.
Our, our next person, uh, board, and resident, item five-one-eight presentation regarding thirty-four town center unfortunate or significant car accident, will not be attending, will get done with the black by every date on the next committee meeting. So we'll go right on, Mr. Kenneth Webb, Fact Finders and Nerds Express, and this is regarding village-wide camera systems.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, the trustees. Thank you for allowing us to make this presentation this evening. My name is Kenneth Webb, I'm the President and CEO of Fact Finders Group Incorporated. We are a security investigative firm located in Maxine, Illinois. We've been performing work for this village from an investigative approach for the last ten, fifteen years. I have with me my partner, Mr. Dustin Barlow, and what we have done is form a collaboration, a physical, physical security specialist and technology specialist. And that's what Mr. Barlow's specialty is, technology. With that, we think we bring to the village of University Park and our clients, a special niche, something that everybody needs today, when it comes to fighting crime and dealing with visibility. So what we propose to you is to provide this entire village with closed-circuit television tech, technology, where we can catch and view facial recognition, license plates, crime as it occurs, and make your community a safe place. Mr. Barlow will explain to you some of the intricate details of what we propose to do for you.
Good evening. Good evening. And it's, yeah, my name is Dustin Barlow.
It's in the mic, you have a bar, please.
Yeah, my name is Dustin Barlow, uh, President of Nerds Express, as Ken mentioned, we, we formed a collaboration. Uh, my background has been in IT, uh, I've been doing it since I was actually thirteen years old. And together, you know, combining my skill set with, uh, Mr. Webb's skill set, uh, we're able to, you know, combine both the, uh, the law, legal side of it, as well as the technology side. Uh, so basically proposing is that we, you know, we've been doing this for a lot of other cities, where we would actually, we have a technology platform that is really a padded technology, that can do what they call cloud federation. Um, so what that means is that we can bring in all the various systems that the university, uh, University Park may have, uh, such as, you know, access control, card readers, intrusion detection systems, which are alarm systems, gunshot detector, or either an in-car video from the base cars, to body cameras, bring it all to a centralized platform, as well as all the various municipality, uh, buildings, we can all bring into the central real-time crime center, where officers can monitor twenty-four-seven, as well as, you know, and they call analytics, various alerts, such as, if there's an incident, face detection, gunshot detection, or anything that might trigger any cause of alarm, so that the officers can more quickly respond to it. Uh, furthermore, this platform that will allow you to do that can actually be expanded out to the local businesses and residents. What that means is that, uh, the various gas stations, corner stores, can also be part of this program as well, because we can also service them, where they can install a camera at their facility, and with their permission, can allow the police department to be able to view the video real-time. Um, that way, it could be an actual, um, added value to the local businesses and residents, where they're all collaborating together, where we can, you know, with the one common goal of communities, uh, safety. Um, you know, what I, what I did do too, um, I do have a presentation that I will make sure to send over to the media department, that can be viewed from, for, for the entirety, that actually will show you a little bit of how the platform looks, kind of show you some integrations, so you, you know, so as to license plate recognition, and how everything ties in, as well as some of the benefits from, you know, not only the police department, like officials, to the residents and local businesses, all the different values, and kind of see what it looks like in a, in a real-time atmosphere.
So, with that, uh, are there any questions?
Well, we're always gonna take some, uh, if that's it, what you guys are gonna talk about, now I'm quite sure we can have some dialogue with questions, and, and talk about it, because I guess one of our concerns with the economy, with gas prices going up, with food prices going up, is causing a chaotic mindset, and crime is up, robberies are up, you know, so, and we don't have any protection right now, as far as visibility goes, so we're very interested in that. This is something that we all talked about, our metro station, around our schools, and around our parks. It's, it's where we need, it's twenty-first century, so there's a question, Mrs. Morgan, then, anybody else has a question? We'll go along and have a, a little dialogue, and move, keep on talking.
Well, we would love to partner with you.
You, uh, spoke about, uh, different businesses, we don't have that many businesses, and, uh, crime, uh, there's a lot of, uh, little, a few petty crimes. Uh, so, uh, I'm just thinking, does it really make sense, Mayor and trustees, to get such an expensive, I'm sure there's great expense, to take, uh, videos of no activity? And I think, uh, not too long ago, you just had a camera system put on, um, Western, where it catches cars and all of that. So I'm just wondering, is that a good decision to make?
Let me explain, that, that camera system on Western Avenue, we are participating, but Will County has took the initiative, and in the forefront, those are license plate reader cameras, so if there's a crime, and there's, let's say, a, a blue Chevrolet that's fleeing the crime scene, or leaving town in an expedited mannerism, then a license plate reader will be able to recognize who that is, that can why, that it's not a stolen car, they can come to some conclusion to the criminal act.
That's a good idea, how we're not like Orland, I'm sure you're familiar with Orland and Chili Park. We don't have businesses, uh, back-to-back lined all over, so I'm just wondering, uh, is it really a good idea? Now, now I can, I'm sure your system is wonderful, but, uh, we don't have no, much money, and I'm sure if Ms. E. was here, she would let you know, quit asking her, hurry. We don't have no money.
Well, let me just say this, as a retired Chicago police officer, thirty-one years, there's no cost that you can pay to be safe. And, and, for safety, to ensure that your children are safe. You, see, what, what you have to understand is not just, it ain't just you, it's everybody that comes in this community. It's the school buses, it's the police and fire, you have vendors, even though you may not have a large string of businesses, but you do have businesses, and they are susceptible to becoming victims of crime. Each and every one of you sitting in this room, right here today, is a possible, potential victim. Crime just don't have no special place, it's everywhere. And if you look at the, like the mayor mentioned, the rising cost of living has created another criminal element. People are desperate. There's not enough money out here.
You're right.
You may be doing well, but there are a lot of people that are doing as well as you. But we want to protect our children, we want to protect our homes, we want to protect our schools, we want to protect our community. And if there is a culprit out there, we will give you the technology that will help us to identify and apprehend that person.
Do you have any other questions, Trustee? Trustee, I can't.
So, uh, I'm gonna be clear about this. We are here for a very challenging summer.
Yes.
And the writers on the wall. Just yesterday. I'm doing, uh, long work with my daughter, and we hear gunshots, broad daylight, first night's day, yeah. The amount of kids that are walking around with guns in their backpacks, idle time, making impulsive decisions, is a scary thought. I'm telling you, we're in for a very challenging summer. Our focus needs to be on security. Nothing else matters if, 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 if this turns into what it can turn into. And we headed in that direction, I'm telling y'all.
It doesn't discriminate.
Yes.
I'm telling you.
It's to the trustee.
Home invasions, carjackings, murders, shooters, it's happening here. I'm willing to say that I want to shift my focus, uh, specifically on this topic, because it's gonna be a challenging summer, and it started yesterday, and it's not even summer. The first eighty-degree day, first night's day, this is serious, this is state of emergency, and I hope you can, I, I, I keep saying it at every meeting, because I'm in tune with the young kids, and I, I see them. I can talk to them, and I can try to mentor them, and I can try to help them, but it's already here, the guns are already here, the access is, it's too easy to access a gun in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two for a kid. And when you couple that with impulsive decisions, you have shooters, you have murders, you have robberies. This is not, this is not a joke right here, I, I know we don't have a lot of money, but I'm telling y'all, listen to me. This is serious right now, in the village of University Park. We don't get much coverage like Chicago, but this stuff happening here that y'all don't, everybody don't know about, because a lot of stuff gets swept under the rug. We are literally going into a summer that could be a state of emergency, especially with the prices and inflation, and people starving, and people hungry, you got people doing crimes who wouldn't typically do crimes, but they have to do something to feed their families, and that's a scary thought. I'm open to this idea, in fact, I'm open to anything that could help protect the residents at this point, because if you don't believe, you just watch.
It's an investment in every single life that's here today, and that hears the sound of our voices. It's an investment in human life, with, uh, child trafficking, and with sex crimes, with people coming from all over the place. We're foolish not to, we just took control of our metro stations. Now we got the single people that might come at late at night in the middle of the bus. How could we not put cameras in the metro station, east and west side? How could we not put cameras on Cicerone Central, where we can get X amount of dollars for all the overweight trucks that's coming to town? Also giving us protection, say, how could we not talk about cameras around Coretta Scott King? How could we not talk about cameras around Frig and Homestead Park, and around our top-notch? We talking about the speed bumps, we talking about light, safety issues, there is no doubt about it, that's not worth saving a life. It could be. I mean, anybody, other day, carjacking, uh, somewhere, they were st, in a stolen car, another guy was coming out the store, that car was not better, not faster, but guess what the hell happened? They took that car and left the other stolen car, right here in town now, right here in town! Ain't nothing to play with, ain't nothing to play with, I won't do it.
So how did the camera stop that incident?
If the camera does not stop the incident, it could give live, live time, shot spotters will give you a, a pretty much eighty percent location, where the shots are fired from, we don't always have to wait for Will County to go back with the verbiage, to say, this is what's location over here, this is the location over here, times of the essence, it could facial recognition, so if these people have records or other places, well, this is what we found, he's out in University Park. We've been so fortunate enough to go to other states, just recently, and capture people who've done in these crimes here in University Park. So to not think about these cameras and invest them slowly but surely in the most sensitive places, we would not be responsible for holding these seats. Yes, I'm sorry, sorry.
Oh, question, Mr. Webb, I, how long have you been in business?
Um, I'm, I'm glad to say this is our twenty-sixth year in business.
How many other municipalities do you, do you cover out in the Southland area?
With the closed-circuit TVs?
Yes.
Uh, we don't cover any in this area. But we have, uh, installed them in Michigan, and Detroit can, uh, Detroit specifically, and Dustin can elaborate on the other locations.
Correct, we, we've done several other cities in the Michigan area, um, you know, for City Detroit work, oh, we have the City Dinkster, we just, you know.
I can't hear you, Dustin, that might.
I'm sorry, I apologize. You know, City Detroit is a free, where I recognize one, like, for instance, they have adapted the technology, it's called Project Greenlight, uh, which is highly reputable, uh, which we were involved with. Um, that's a prime example, and it's, this case studies show how it did reduce crimes. I mean, even the fact that they had the green lights that's been around, people know that, okay, if I entered this area, I'm gonna go to somewhere else, because they clearly have high-definition video on me. Uh, so we know that's when we implemented there, there's other cities we've implemented various coin terms that are similar to green light, with the City of Dinkster. Um, and so there's a, there, we've done, you know, we've been involved with roughly over a hundred different installs similar to this.
Well, I'm, I'm going to say this, I have known about Fact Finders for many, many, many years. Um, I've myself had to go to Mr. Webb's office several times, for different things. And I am going to say this, when I listened to Trustee Franklin, Tutu Franklin, he's in tune with what is going on in this community, and he was involved in something recently that was unreal. And my daughter is sixteen years old, she's in high school, she's terrified, because she's worried. Um, I was reading about a young child with social media that shot himself in the head live, and their parent had to run in there and see them dead, and just does not know where the gun, gun, gun came from. As I'm, I'm going through the communities, and I'm outside, I'm starting to see things that are not familiar to me, and what I was accustomed to when I moved into University Park. Things are changing quickly, and I mean, when I say quickly, I mean quickly, we're not living in Mayberry any longer. We have to protect ourselves, and to protect ourselves, there is no cost, like he said, to save it, because you're not gonna know if one of your neighbors get killed, or raped, or whatever, or stuck up when they're going out to work in the morning, it's gonna be a problem. And so I think that this is a wise, wise investment, and I think that, you know, this is a, this is a no-brainer, because we all want to be safe, and there's no price on safety. So if we have to cut corners, and other ways to do things, to provide this for our community, this is what is necessary. So when the hard decisions come up with this budget, I'm talking to my legislators that are sitting here with me, all the friendships, all the relationships, all of these different things are gonna have to be put to the wayside, for the whole entire community. We have to make the decision to protect the community, what do we need on the right, and what is required for us to have on the left. So it's, it's necessary, because we want all of these things in the community, but we're not willing to cut back where we need to cut back, and make the sacrifices that are necessary to get the things that we need. And that means cameras throughout our community, that means safety for our children, that means safety for our seniors. Our seniors, you know, they packing, they not, you know, just walking around with their purse, they'll get you. So, you know, when you're walking up on them, you need to be very careful, because they're not gonna go down without fighting. So with that being said, you know, I think that this is one of the wisest decisions that the. that the village has made, and why? Because it's important, we, why do you, why not do it now, when nothing has happened? We need to take care of the business of the community and invest in this.
Thank you trustee, trustee. Okay, uh, all right, Ms. Robin, trustee McFadden, I see, I just see your hand, I got you next after, uh, Mr. trustee McFadden, J. Mc.
Um, Mr. Webb, um, great presentation.
In that mic, in that, in that mic, please, trustee.
Mr. Webb, great presentation. Um, trustee Tutu. Some of you, I agree with them, we need to protect our city. So this is something positive that we need to look into, and we need to make sure when the budget gets passed, we need to make sure this is.
Thank you so much.
Uh, let me, let me ask a question, is, are there some portions that are grants affiliated or opportunity for grant money for security? I, I was noticing there was something in that infrastructure we have regarding something of that nature. Technology.
Correct, there, and we worked other, other cities before, there's a lot of other federal dollars out there. Um, I know there's the Biden Road Recovery Funds, there's a lot of, uh, CARES Act funding too. There's a lot of things out there that we can pursue, a lot of grants. And, um, you know, I'll personally work with the University Park and, uh, to make sure that, you know, anything we've done in other cities, we can help bring here, because of the various grants that we pursue to help fund this, because the ideal scenario is that it does involve a general budget. You know, there's already federal dollars set aside for these type of initiatives.
And money in Springfield regarding that, and also, yeah, there, there is money out there. Okay, thank you for that answer. Uh, there's a resident, Ms. Walker?
Yeah, um, two questions, approximately how much might something like this cost? One question, and then my second question is for the board and mayor is, uh, I agree with y'all totally, but I was just wondering if we don't have no money for nothing else, there's always no money? Can we, is it possible that we can make this work? Uh, because all I hear y'all say is no money for, no money for, no money. No money mean no money, do we have it, can it get done, is it possible?
Ms. Walker, yes, we're going to make this work. And if that means that we have to make necessary budget cuts, the necessary budget cuts need to be done. It's not optional. So that means that it's gonna be some difficult times ahead, but it's gonna be done, done and done, because we have to protect ourselves. It's not something that is optional. We're at, we're not at an option right now.
So I, I don't think, just, just from, uh, an average point of view, it has to be, it's a little more work that has to be done, it has to be collaboration with, with our police department and getting data and statistics on one of the hot areas, what's a suggestive area, so it's, it's a process. I'm quite sure it is, because I've talked to other mayors, we're probably one of the only municipalities who don't have any kind of cameras.
Well, one of the most important things is that we would come out and perform an assessment. We wouldn't just throw cameras anywhere. We would collaborate with the local law enforcement, uh, officials, and we would also look at your crime statistics to determine where we should put this stuff. Yeah, but one of the things that I did want to make a correction, we did install cameras and COVID scanners in school district one sixty-two. They ought to mention that. Yeah, in Mass.
So I, uh, I just want to say too, I mean, this is just one piece of the puzzle. Because I, I already know people gonna say, oh, they want to put cameras up, well, I know police, right? So it's, uh, it's, it's, it's more than, it's more than one piece of the puzzle that needs to happen. But I believe that this is extremely important because a police officer can only be in one place at one time. So to hire a poli, to hire a police officer is not gonna have the impact of something of this magnitude. So, the eyes in the sky are able to assist us with people that do the crimes go to jail. And also, when criminals know that there's cameras up, it deters them from doing crimes, that's, that's common sense.
Yeah, because you're right, because we need that reputation in University Park. Hell, we're not going out there because they got too much going on, they got the cameras, they got the police, but because like trustee Franklin said, we get, get the new patrol officers, younger patrol officers without high salaries, we need bike patrols, we need foot patrols, we need to have our police department equipped with everything that the criminals have. ATV, they got the little bikes, they're scattered on the path, can't go there.
Right, so it's, uh, it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's a recipe, but I think this is definitely a part of the recipe. As well as I've been talking about crime-free housing and putting pressure on the landlords who are allowing crimes to happen on, on the premises of the homes that they, that they have, excuse me, I'm talking, thank you ma'am, uh, uh, homes that they are, that they, they are owning. And then also, we need to bring the owner of, uh, Brittany Woods to the forefront. And there, there needs to be pressure put on that complex to make sure that they're doing their due diligence and provide security and lights and different things, so it's, it's a recipe that needs to happen, but I do believe that this is definitely a part of the recipe, and we need to be strategic. And, uh, to Ms. Walker's question, I, I agree. You know, it, 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 this is not an option as far as it goes with funding, because I, it's a life and death situation, so this is more important than anything else in my mind, and I keep saying that. So we have to find the money to protect the citizens. Because we, we, we are, we are clearly in a state of emergency. Uh, within the last ten days, a young man at the middle school called with a gun, loaded weapon, like, this stuff is happening right here, this is not nothing that we can put on hold. This is not nothing that we can, it, it, we, we have to figure out how to find the money, shift the money, make it, make it happen to, to make sure that we're safe. Yeah, we gotta tap into every avenue we can, because we, we we headed to a place that we don't want to head to.
I think everything that everybody is saying is, uh, correct in a way, but I just think that things ought to be done in chronological order. Prioritize. You think that, first of all, you talk about our children. They're totally, uh, don't have nothing to do. There's no structure for the children. So they have no other, they have nothing else to do but loaf the street. And then, with that, you don't have no policemen. Three policemen per shift is not enough.
Don't say the word.
Along with having that, then you talk about, uh, 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 getting the cameras. So we're gonna get cameras, you get rid of policemen, our chief is gone. You don't have no other policemen. You, you don't give the children nothing to do. We have volunteers like myself, thirty-three years, and Ms. Robin, who is the, uh, baseball president, you have Ms. Starlson. We have all these mothers and fathers that want to give children structure, but you wouldn't even give six hundred dollars for the baseball, I don't understand it. So you're talking out the side of your neck in a way. You understand what I'm saying? So that's how, sir, and that, that, I appreciate your, your presentation was wonderful. But see, you don't live here, and you don't know all the other things that's happening here. So when you do such a wonderful presentation, why should we have cameras all over the place being able to have policemen? There's something wrong with that picture.
And, and Mrs. Morgan, we know that the taxpayers currently now are paying for a parking recreation system and are really deprived of that, that's why we advocate so strongly to support a park district and have some workshops do that. Because it alleviates some of the things, so we have to be open minded.
You have to stop doing everything else.
Okay, well, that, that's it, but right now we're just gonna focus on these cameras. Because we know the problem, we're solution people here.
Okay.
All right. We're solutions, yes, Mrs. Lawson.
I, I think in being solution people, we have to, uh, have the vision to, uh, make our village safer. Uh, Ms. Morgan, uh, spoke in terms of doing things in order, and I believe in doing things decently and in order. And so you do, you invest in your young people, and you teach them, the community, the village has to make an investment that way as well. So you have to have the whole vision. Not just come in and put in cameras, that's like going to the schools and putting in, uh, you know, all the, uh, the gates and everything in the schools, and security in the schools, and nobody's really teaching or investing in the children. So I just want to encourage the board to look at a whole vision of where we would be ten years from now. If we start to invest in our children uh, right now, we can bring down some of these things that we're afraid are happening in our community now. They're happening because we didn't see it ten years ago. And we didn't make any investment in our young people ten years and twenty years ago. And so now we're feeling that in our community. We have to have an overall vision of how we want our community to be and invest in those important things. I'm all for safety. I want safety in our community, I'm all for having cameras so that we can see and, and, uh, you know, be on the forefront of what's happening. But I also just, uh, implore you to have a vision for the future of our village, and not just pump some cameras in here and not have any other oversight into what, uh, University Park will become in the years to come.
Can I respond to that? Can I respond? You, you responded that certainly, and we have one more question for trustee, if not, we'll go to, trustee Lewis. We'll go trustee Jenkins-Bell and trustee, uh, uh, Lewis after Ms. Webb.
Well, you're certainly right about investing in the community. And one of the things that, one of the young ladies said, I don't live here, but I tracts through this community. I play golf at University Park, I've been playing over there since it's been here, before it was there. I'm always buying food at one of the food places in this community and supplies at some of the stores. But one of the other things that we bring to the table, we have a non-for-profit organization. And in that organization, we have opportunities where we go to the community and we provide things like low voltage wire training. Same thing with the, with the closed circuit TV and, and the cybersecurity aspects. We are members of what they call the United States Minority Contractors Association. And with that, we have STEM program. We have an AET program where we can have training. But we need the community to come to us too. We need to let the community have us be involved with what's going on in your community. Because, I mean, it, it's a happy medium for everybody. So just to let you know, we're just not coming in to just take your money and run. We're gonna be part of the problem and the solution.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Webb. Go trustee, uh, Jenkins-Bell.
Uh, Mr. Webb, I'm looking at the situation, and I, you know, I heard Ms. Lawson and Ms. Millie, and this is helping conversation, so you can see everybody's point of view and where they stand, so you can collaborate. And I think that's a good thing. But, you know, I want to ask you a question, and I, you know, you've been around for, you know, in business, wow. I want to know what, we, we have allowed so many businesses to come into our community. They come in with these fly-by-night businesses, they here one day, go on the next, economic development over there. They have stepped up and did a little something. But I want to know, what type of neighbor are you going to be to this community and to our children? How would you, not just with a STEM program, because we have sports organizations, and the STEM program is nice, but what type of, what type of neighbor are you going to be with our children?
Well, for me, I'm a staple.
Okay.
And, and, and that's really important. When you are part of the community.
Okay.
I eat here. My office is at forty-seven forty-seven Lincoln Mall Drive, Matchon, Illinois. I drive right down the street, I come over to University Park two, three, four, five times a week. I get, buy my gas over here. You know, I buy food over here. And I also service this wonderful village, we provide investigative services for University Park, we've done that, and we've supported you guys in many, many ways. When you ask fact finders, we step up to the plate. And we will continue to do that, got my word with it.
Okay. Um, also, I do support all my trustees on here, but we also need to add another piece of the puzzle, which is crime prevention strategy also needs to be a part of this process as we're talking about the safety of our village. We need to have that added to the agenda, as trustee Jenkins-Bell has said, as well as trustee Franklin. That needs to be a part of the agenda, where we have a prevention program for this.
I agree, and that would definitely be part of our assessment.
So real quick, as, as, as we wind down, uh, we got trustee Franklin, we got Mrs. Barry in the back, but as we wind down, so say, say for instance, uh, this moves forward, everyone interested, so tell us the step, ni, assessment, tell us the step, the process. Because this isn't something that happens overnight.
And the cost, how much?
No, we don't have that, listen.
So the first step is, we would, me with all the department here, but we'll be with the mayor, we will determine, okay, where are the, we have to do an assessment. We want to know all the statistics, we want to know where all the harmful areas are. And we'll prioritize that, we'll work with you. Again, my whole vision is that I will want to see this not come out of general fund, we're trying to find grant dollars to pay for this. Uh, so the cost is really not that much of a burden on, on the University Park. Uh, so that'll be the first step. And then not to mention, you know, from there, once we make determination, we figure out, okay, if we do this in phases, we roll this out. Then we'll get the city prep first, and then after that's functioning, is working, and, and then we know we have, uh, all the areas covered, then we'll look to roll out to the community, work on our local businesses, develop a formal program where if businesses want to be part of this initiative, they will know, they will know the process become part of it. And we will definitely assist them and work with them all the way. Because again, this is, we look at this as a long-term relationship with the, with the University Park, uh, followed with the, with the trustees, uh, request of that, I mean, that, you know, I had to say that, she was just like, Mr. Webb mentioned, you know, we want to implement workforce development, we want to work with the local residents, we want to achieve some skills, because ultimately, someone has to service these cameras, right? Someone has to be able to be there and be standby support, so we would love to, you know, and this is, again, this is a lifelong passion of mine, that we're gonna partner with University Park to develop workforce development, so that we will entail these skills, so that they can work with us, make sure that camera goes down, okay, this is the resolution. We need to rerun the cable, we need to do this, we need to program it, and as well, create opportunities and jobs for the people.
And with the influx of people, and we anticipate the year with twenty-two thousand plus jobs and the metro station, people coming in, coming into the new jobs and everything, it's gonna be a massive people coming in, there's gonna be great economic opportunities, the village is really going in a good direction. Trustee Franklin, as we wind up here.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I just don't want to rush through this topic, it's such, such an important topic, too. I want to respond to, uh, uh, Starlson. I want to say thank you for, for your comment, and I agree that what we see is a manifestation, a manifestation of not investing in our children appropriate ways for the last twenty-plus years. Um, along with, um, subliminal messages in the music, along with, um, videos, social media, access to guns, new drugs, um, young parents, and a host of other things. And I agree with the vision. But my question is, what do we do right now? For this summer that's coming up? Um, in a perfect world, we can say, hey, we have mentor programs and we got a STEM program, put your guns down and come on over here and be a part of this.
Sounds good.
Trustee, I know something we can do like actually right now, that would take a lot of mo, like right now at this moment, we can start by putting the rims up at Palmer Park, basketball keeps a lot of people out. We can start right there with some simple, put the basketball rims up in April, beginning of April, that will take, that'll help. So we can just start right there, right now.
So that's, I mean,
That's a quick, little.
That's like, that's like saying, put some basketball rims up in Inglewood and they'll stop shooting, they gonna shoot at the park. The kids have guns already. And see, that's why I'm trying to rain the lawn. You'll, you'll, we'll get bigger crowds at the park, and there'll be more guns at the park. So I'm saying, what, what do we, what, what can we do immediately? And that's why, that's why I appreciate this, this conversation that we having, and I'm with you, I, I'm with you on that. I'm, I'm being a devil's advocate because I know how kids are. Just like we got the park, painted nice, did nice things in the park, and then kind of spray painted the garbage cans. I was done, then it spray painted the buildings, right? But the park looks nice, but kids gonna still do stuff. So in a perfect world, yeah, we can put up basketball rims and do these different things, but we're in a place right now where these kids already have guns, and you can fry your face all you want, but I'm telling you, we have to be, we have to be proactive to save lives right now. Somebody was shot yesterday, a kid had a gun at the middle school last week. The murders continue to raise, the gunshots continue to happen, it's, it's more and more gunshots. This is not a basketball. This is not a basketball rim issue. This is a risk, this is an issue, but we have to now make sure that the people who are doing the crimes know that we're putting things in place so they bust and go to jail. And send a message to them. So they don't think that they could just come to University Park and do whatever they want to do, because that's what they doing. People are coming out here, shooting people and leaving. Some of the stuff is not even our residents.
Most of it.
People are moving out here because they saying, we can move out here and do what we want to do. So it's time for us to send a message. And I, and I, and I agree, it's a menu of things that need to happen. I agree, the basketball rims is a part of it. Uh, more, more programs and activities is a part of it. More policemen is a part of it. More mentoring programs is a part of it. But I'm concerned about these next couple of months. And if you don't believe me, you gonna see. We have to do something.
The cameras don't stop.
The ca, the cameras will give people a rescue. What's gonna stop, what's gonna stop the incident? You tell me. Since, since you know everything, what's gonna stop the incident?
More police protection.
The police can't stop the incident. One police can only be in one place at one time.
We don't have no policemen.
Mrs. Morgan, Mrs. Morgan, Mrs. Morgan, let's, let's be in order. Listen, everybody has their opinion. We have to make these decisions, the hard decisions, for the welfare of the community. You finished, trustee? Ms. Mary? Mrs. Trust, I mean, I'm sorry.
Three police.
Just give me one second. And see, that's a some of the problem. We invite problems when you get on public TV and say, we only got this, we only got that. Come on, if I'm a criminal, I'd say, oh, we only got that there. Now, come on, let's be thinking, let's care about our community as we say we do and do the best that we possibly can to ensure that every single resident in this town is safe. It's ridiculous to sit up here with what we don't have. The cup is half full and we reaching that top. So we're working on it. It's a work in progress. Go ahead, Ms. Mary, I'm sorry.
I, I know you people tired of hearing us say these things, but it's absolutely true. And say what you will to me, these guns didn't just happen. Adults were involved in it and they brought the guns here. You know it, you know it. There are guns everywhere. And when you start talking about taking the guns away, the National Rifle Association, everybody else will be here and ready to cut your throat. You know it, you know it. Everybody here knows.
I'm a father of a gunshot victim. It's not a good feeling.
Exactly, including your son. And they all have guns. How many people in here have a gun? But you play golf, and let me tell you, basketball is a black man's golf. And to these children who don't have fathers, seventy percent of these homes in University Park are, they're headed by women who don't, who are probably out for work, doing work. This is all over. I got a family member that works up north where the million dollar homes are, plus. She services the whole area. They're robbing up there where the people have money, have something to rob. Then you will see the car back out here because he can bring it to his mamas and his daddy who's crossed the track everywhere. He can bring it out here and leave it. But they're not going, working in my house won't help you in it because nothing in there is real. Everything is cosmetic, okay? But there's a lot of cameras around my house too. Everywhere you go, somebody sees you. But we've gone through the same shit, uh, before. For those of you who've been here for a while, do we remember, uh, Fred Carr?
Exactly.
And all those cameras down there?
Exactly.
Do we remember Breefer Farm and those cameras?
Exactly.
Yes. And what?
Ways to the night.
And that's about who's bringing them all back. Of course we do. But these children, in the meantime, so many policemen in my family, it's, I am so glad that my granddaughter's father retired from Chicago Police Department. I do, I am very happy because she wants her daddy to come home to school. But all these cameras, all this noise about shotgun shots, you ain't caught nobody. All millions of dollars spent over here and over there. I haven't heard them catch anybody in Chicago with those cameras. Okay? We see you on TV. So you see the woman pulling, the man pulling the mattress down the street and all that, did you catch it? You see the guy going in the store, taking out the, the big watches and stealing the cars? How many of them did you bring? Excuse me?
That was called a criminal.
Oh, okay. We see all this, but did you arrest them? No. Do you want to do like the mayor of Aurora, lock them all up? That's one way of dealing with them. Lock them up. Let's pick up your kid and lock him up too. But spend some time with your child and maybe somebody else's too. Before we have to lock up your kids or your grandkids or whatever. Make preparation and lock up your kids too. The hospital was open, uh, uh, Mayor Rudes, the hospital was open when your son got caught. Shot him where, head, everywhere.
All over, yeah.
Yeah. He wasn't in University Park. These things gonna happen because that's the way we're raising our kids. With a lack of license in them. So throwing up all these cameras, you gotta spend some time with them people. And I, I'm for that. Okay, but I'm not just creating, throwing away money, my money, because I'm the taxpayer.
That's right.
I swear my husband got a camera everywhere.
It's cameras all over.
Cameras all over the place. And you can come there and take everything. Did you go? We saw the man coming, having to put a TV in our garbage can and all that. Nothing we could do. Well, we put it up, we got, so we said. But what are we gonna do? We call the police? Is that the police? I have a police card right on, in my foyer there, where I can call and, and show you my, myself on my, uh, uh, on my camera. But what is good, you got to spend some time with these children.
Exactly.
You got to do some things that add it off. You out there playing golf, mister, and you're playing golf because you don't have to be at home cleaning up or dealing with your wife somewhere and squawking like me, okay? That's where you are.
Thank you.
So that's fine and good too, but I've been around here a long time and I'm for, I, I for this IT and all that. And I'm for this because I, like I said, I got them all over my house. But you know, you can't take too much of our money here. We don't have too much of it. But most of the, the money is being taken up north and they coming back to your house because those children live, when they say somebody's turning in, those children are living with your moms and your uncles or somebody in your house. Spend some time with these children.
Thank, thank you so much, Mrs. Trust. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. uh, Mr. and Mrs. Webber. It's not talking about my son, man, because seeing a person that's bleeding to death and shot that many times and then watching him take a bullet out of my son's head, thank God for his life, he's blind behind that. It's something that no one wants to deal with or encounter. And God forbid that when people lose their loved ones to, since this accident, that's by devil. So it, it's a horrible situation. It's a chaotic place in the world that we live in. And what we want to do as a governing body, do our very best to ensure that every resident is safe as possible that we can do. Bottom line, making a long story short, where there's a will, there's a way. As everyone says, you find that gold money for everything else, you find money to protect our residents and the people that come in our community. Cause we thrive and on a, on a, thanks, guys. Thanks.
Thank you, and just keep in mind.
And we'll, and we'll, and we'll follow up and maybe if, if it's the consensus of the board, you guys can go ahead and start doing, uh, and then, and then, uh, uh, drive the people, but not just that, an assessment. A just basic assessment, working with our police department, looking at hot areas where the statistics say that this might warrant where this needs to go. All right, and we'll continue the conversation moving forward.
Shouldn't it be three beers?
Okay.
Is that the way we operate with three beers?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you so much.
It's a variety of ways. Okay, here's another big deal. Uh, guys, come on, I don't want to be saying these names. Sharish? Shresh? Come on, these gentlemen are here to help us and take, give us some input with our water situation. We're not going to keep you sitting there being held hostage. We're going to find ways to get them made away. Little time, little patience, understanding the big picture, way beyond our turn. Flow is yours, sir.
Thank you. How much time do I have?
It's on you. It's important. Water is life.
It is. Security comes after first of all water. Uh, my name is Suresh Jambarathan, and thank you for letting me speak. I'm here as part of the USMCA, Mr. Webbs spoke, Bernie Hill, and Jethan Kali, we are all part of USMCA. We are different companies, but we are really here USMC members. Uh, I met Mayor Rudes casually in the last USMC meeting and that conversation found out that there may be an issue with lead entering the water. Uh, in the previous life, by the way, I have my own consulting company, consulting project development company. It's called Energy and Water Development.
Can you talk up a little louder?
Yes. Uh, I have a.
Take the mic like a singer.
And as I speak, if my accent isn't clear, please just raise your hand because the point here is to communicate clearly. And I will utterly not be offended. In fact, I ask that you stop me if I'm not clear. So I have my own consulting company, uh, that does project engineering across energy and water. It's up in Aurora. And I spoke to, casually met Mayor Rudes at the last USMCA. It, uh, I, I understood that there was an issue with lead entering residents' homes. And it's a technical issue which has health benefit, uh, health implications, including cognitive decline. And it's really important. The, there are dozen pages on the problem. All of them require money and all of us here are taxpayers. There's a federal program, US government program called WIFIA, W-I-F-I-A. If you Google search, W-I-F-I-A.
WIFIA?
WIFIA. Yeah, W-I-F-I-A. If you Google it, you'll find that. It's administered by the EPA, Energy, uh, Environment Protection Agency. So the issue is not money. The issue is really clearly defining the lead issue. And then when I put on the engineering hat, it means understanding how much water is consumed, the concentration of the lead and maybe other contaminants. The concentration times the quantity is the actual amount of lead entering the house. And then you look at how to solve the issue. Is it something as simple as changing the water chemistry? Maybe changing the pipes entering the home, maybe something else. Standing here, I don't know what the solution is, but I do know, like Mr. Webbs said, it starts with assessment. You got to get good data. When you have data, then you conceptualize a solution, or many solutions. Each solution will have a certain cost to it, initial capital cost and operating cost. And then the question is, does the new solution provide benefit compared to business as usual? As I understand it, business as usual is what, what is the drinking water is provided to residents, which is okay as a stopgap, but the residents have to decide if they want to continue that long term or look at a more sustainable solution. Adding to it and going slightly outside scope is, if you're going to do a water project, water improvement project, does it make sense to also procure, generate your own energy? Half an hour ago, that parking lot was very sunny, right? Come, and instead of putting a, you can put a solar panel over there and use the power to power all these lights. So you save the money to, you buy power from the grid. So there are literally the multiple things can, can be done and the money, and money is available. A lot of it is US government money or taxpayer money. And these programs are well-known. They're public information. Happy to share that with you. So that was, that was the overall, you know, headline, the executive summary session. The devil is always in the details. And the first step, if there is indeed a lead problem, is to characterize it properly. And that means, you know, sitting down, looking at data, historical data, trend data, quantifying that number and then asking, you know, how many people are going to lead or to hospital? Is there a decline in the test score of students compared to another community, it's a demographic? That difference tells you the economic, the impact of lead, hence economic impact on the community. These things have to be quantified, and when you quantify something, you can attribute dollar value to it. So that's all the headline. Stop for a second, if there's any questions before I turn to Jethan and to Bernie.
Okay, okay. Just, uh, just, just a brief narrative. We were at, I was on the panel with the United States Minority Contractors and water happened to be a discussion. So as I was explaining to him what the problem is, because unfortunately, Aqua has this community in a monopoly. They own the infrastructure, the water lines, the transfer lines and everything. Since this thing occurred, the system was breached because when they brought in the new source of water, what the law required was them to take a piece of the existing pipe off and take it into the laboratory to test the effects of the new chemical into the piping. Unfortunately, in this instance, they decided not to do the basic thing by taking it to the laboratory. So what they did was computer-generated testing. So when they did the computer-generated testing and they implemented it into the new system, the chemical is sequestered, which is now banned by the US EPA, was extremely too strong and it stripped the interior scaling, or as most people call it, coating off the inside of the, uh, the water lines. At one time, the whole community was under the advisory. And as the I EPA and US EPA got more involved, then they come to make the determination is that it's only on the homes built between nineteen seventy-three and nineteen eighty-eight. At that time, lead solder was permissible, uh, to, to join water fights together. Since then, it's been outlawed and everything is PVC. So now, even though the Aqua Water Company, it was their breach, now they're twisting the game and putting on every single resident that has a property from, uh, seventy-three to eighty-eight, eighty-seven, somewhere in that area, including my home. There are fifteen hundred homes in the advisory. We don't know how many actually people, because we don't know how many people reside in each home. So his suggestion was that, well, let me come make a presentation because there's money there. If we can't get out the system right away, that there may be an opportunity for our residents who are on the advisory to get money to have the pipes replaced inside of their homes. So that is the purpose and the principle of their dialogue and, uh, conversation today. So it might be a little hard to kind of understand him at times because he's a, speaks a little bit different of his accent, which I really like it, you know, it's really good. So we're doing anything and searching in all aspects to try to get a solution, multiple solutions. Not Band-Aids, not quick fixes, but long-term fixes. Because they would love to come and take this community because they figure we don't know what to do with it. Idea of this could be located in so many great amenities. So we're going to do our best to make sure that we maintain what we have, build on it and deliver clean, safe water to our residents. So that's the principle of this whole conversation today, and that's why, that's why he's here. Mrs. Morgan, so you need to ask the question, so go ahead, Mrs. Morgan.
I want to ask you a question. Are you saying that, um, they're talking about, um, doing, um, piping?
Yes. Yes.
All throughout the community?
On the homes that are in the advisory. The advisory, the, the landlines, the fifteen hundred homes.
Um, okay, there's a, last meeting we had, uh, there's a particular area, uh, the visitors. Um, I wonder, um, because it seemed like they're being neglected. Uh, I wonder if you're, you and your associates can do a sampling of, um, one of the residents', uh, water.
Yeah, but that's a good question. I mean, good. Go ahead, Mr. Shush.
Good evening, everyone, and I'm Chief in CA. I'm the president of the Architecture Engineering and Technology Division of US Minority Contractor Association. Uh, we are two hundred plus members who are all initial business owners, contractors, engineers, architects, IT folks. So you know, when the mayor wanted, you know, discuss the solution, my background is, I'm a wastewater water engineer. By training and by education, I'm a licensed professional engineer, state of Indiana, Wisconsin, Indiana, eight states. And I work only in the field of water and wastewater. That's what, so I love water. I love water to drink. I love water. I think this is the greatest resource. I'm not worried about gas lines or electric. I'm more worried about water as a resource. Because there are less than one percent fresh water on the planet Earth. So we are to guard this resource than any other resource. You know, fixing pipes is going to be a big problem with Chicago, Chicago, everywhere you go because of the lead, you know, reaching out to change in the water chemistry. Now, the new infrastructure bill has a provision where we can use those funds, identify communities and use those funds to replace those pipes. Because it's not just fixing pipe outside the. Because it's not just fixing pipe outside the home or inside the home, we have to look at the whole picture. Because just, you know, we have to solve the problem, we don't have to just fix pipes here and there, that's a plumbing issue. But we have, because, you know, what is happening is, there are ten homes in a community. You just fix pipe in one home, that doesn't solve the problem. You know, you have to look at the whole community, you know, and make sure that everyone gets lead-free water. Not just not solving one, you know, so I'm thinking of the whole community. And that's when we need to, I don't want to give a bad idea solution and just go and fix it. That's why, you know, we talk to the mayor and say, we need to look and there's a confidentiality, I don't want to step on Aqua because they have a contract, they have some-
No contract, no-
So, so I don't want to, you know, like say, they are doing a bad job or somebody is doing a bad job. My goal here is, since as an association, we have pool of expertise here, we have some experts in our, you know, association who can, we are contractors who work with water needs. So we want to make sure that as a team, we are able to provide some solutions. And then awarding the contracts, giving the money, that comes much, much later. But at least we want to see how we can help the mayor solve the water issue, which I think is a big problem right now.
I was just wondering, you say, uh, Mayor, no contracts with uh, Aqua?
No.
I wonder how can they uh, remove their pipes?
Not their pipes, our pipes. Their, theirs are mine.
Mine pipes.
That start, that starts where your property begins?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's where they're talking about-
So the pipes is out on the-
The, the, the pipe that, that starts, like, like the curb is here? This park belongs to the village, but this side, who would far belongs to, is the property owner?
Yes, yes.
That's where it starts at, bringing into the home, that's what they're speaking of.
It's called a, it's called a lateral replacement, lateral replacement. So like you said, there's a main, if you're signing on the road, the water main, that is not the issue. The issue is the latrals, the service latrals that go inside the home. Now, at some point, it could be just a pipe that goes inside your home or all the way inside. So it's like into two parts, one that goes inside your home and one that's outside the home.
My, my pipe is, is straight, we're talking about around six thousand dollars.
Yeah, so a typical, you know, replacement project would involve, you know, clearing up the street, removing, and it's roughly around fifteen thousand dollars for every home. Just an average, because it involves your driveway sometimes, it involves the sidewalks, it could be, so, you know, every home is different. If it's on a corner, cul-de-sac, the cost may be a little more because you have to extend the pipe all the way out. So I'm just going to average fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for every pipe replacement. Now, if you multiply that by fifteen hundred homes, that's a big number.
Yes.
So, you know, yeah, around fifteen to twenty thousand is the cost of replacement, that's including the pipe labor budget. So now if you multiply that by fifteen hundred homes, we are looking at a big number. And, you know, I can say, do this for one resident and don't do this for another resident, so we are part of a community project. So we need to put our case in front of the feds and tell the head, you should want, why we need this money. So that way we can access a larger pool of money and get everything done at the same time. The reason is, if you replace ten homes, the same contractor can do it. Instead of calling the same guy over and over, it's better to get everything done in one. So when he opens up the whole road, he can fix all the pipes at the same time.
Yes, we saw one area over at uh, Sullivan, yeah, Sullivan Street.
So, I mean, our goal is to optimize the funds and make sure we get the whole community fixed, you know, instead of just fixing a few homes here and there. That's why we, you know, we are, as an association, thought this is a great opportunity to meet with the mayor, understand the situation. And where, you know, in terms of how we want to approach this, you know, so we can have like a tiered approach where we take the problem, see what funds are available, what are coming, right? Assist with the grants or proposals and then when the contracts will be awarded, we can involve our members in the bidding process. So they can all bid, like I can bid on the job, some contractors can bid on the job. Again, you know, it's up to the mayor, but at least we got the, you know, money to the village. As an associate, that's what I'm going to do right now.
Uh, uh, Mr. DeWor.
So, Cherie, you're our company, uh, you are consultants, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So you're just a consultant? We already have an engineering company, which is Antero Group, which has done the exact same thing. So I don't understand why would we get another consultant for something that we already have a, a, a group to do already. And they've already made some type of assessment with the water. They stated also that the pipes leading into the, the homes were not affected, it's just the pipes within the house. So, uh, to me, this is like unnecessary to get a whole other consulting group to come in, to look over and pay someone to do. When we already have a consulting group, an engineering company that does that, they're getting paid for that. So I don't see the, the purpose of this. No, we already have Antero Group, they're the ones that engineer, they come up with the same type of plans, they did the same water assessments as well. So why would we bring in another consulting group to consult us on what we should do when we have that already?
Excellent point, uh, did you hear her?
Yeah, yeah, I do, I do not have a comment. The Antero Group is a civil engineering group and their expertise is not in water and energy. They can do civil engineering that shows where the pipes lines are when new construction comes and, and do blueprints and things of that nature. Totally a whole different scope of engineering, completely different. So, like with the Carvana or the Amazon, they get the blueprint and they can work on, on which way things get rather. Uh, Mr. DeWor, I think you're just mistaken or don't have the clarity. Antero Group has no background in water, just infrastructure, civil engineering.
But they're consultants, so-
No, they're aren't village engineers.
Right, they're, they're, they are village engineers, but they haven't done anything. But they came up with several plans in regards to the streets, the roads, the pipes.
Yeah, yeah, that's civil engineering.
The same type of thing, and they also, we also brought in other people. Antero Group has brought in people that was experts in certain aspects of what was needed. So if they needed an expert, they brought that expert in to help him come up with that plan. That's the exact same thing that they can do right now, is bringing an expert that has something to do with water, that knows the water, to help them come up with the plans. Getting another consulting group is, is unnecessary.
Go ahead, question, give the answer.
I want to thank you all for, for your presentation. Uh, this is another topic that, that I think, uh, is a bipartisan topic in the sense that everybody in the community agrees that this is something that needs to be, needs to be addressed, uh, we've been battling with this for a while. Uh, we need help, we, we need, we need help. This is a, this is a situation where the water is killing us slow and the crime is killing us fast.
Take, take your point.
I, I think you're on point.
It's another, and I'm not even saying a joke, man, it's, it weighs heavy on my heart, man, because it's true. Um, you touched on something that I've been working on. I've been working on put together screening event for children, five to eight in the community so we can start taking a look at um, the potential effects that the water has had on the families who have made, uh, the children's, uh, formulas with the water, Kool-Aid and other, other drinks. Um, I have an organization that I'm partnering with to, to hopefully be able to, um, start that as soon as this summer. So we can help build the case and as you say, get the quantitative data to show that, that, that there's a, there's a crisis. Um, and also give the families some ammunition to sue. Um, this is a topic that, you know, you have people who say that the board is not doing nothing about the water as if we, we, you know, our houses and, and our families are, are not, uh, experiencing or affecting it, it makes no sense. We need help. Aqua has treated us and showed us that they don't care about this little black community, period. It's not a, it's not, it's, that's just really what's going on. And it is only so much that we can, that we can do and-
About this little community.
I am, I am, so I appreciate the dialogue, solution-based dialogue because something has to happen because we, we can't just continue to, to, to make excuses that, you know, Aqua is not doing their part. So at some point, we have to, we have to figure it out. Because this is, once again, just like the crime is becoming a life and death situation, even though we don't see it up in our face really what's going on, but I, I guarantee if we start screening and assessing these children and, and really taking a look at, at, at the cognitive effects that, that the lead is, is having and had, it'll be detrimental. So I think this is another, um, another good conversation, good dialogue. Um, nobody knows the answer, it's not an open and closed book type of situation. And we, we, we do know that the replacement of the pipes in the homes is the solution. But how to get to that solution is the hurdle. Because like you say, you times, uh, twenty thousand times a hundred, uh, fifteen hundred homes and you're looking at a figure that's-
Three hundred million dollars.
Yeah, absolutely. So I just want to say I appreciate the dialogue, may I appreciate whoever's responsible for bringing up to the forefront. These are the conversations that we have to have because we have to figure out something, we have to figure out something. So, so thank you.
Yeah, when I was at, uh, out on the panel and they start talking about water, because you know, the future is, is basically water, hydrogen and energy. So it ties right on in, you know, the conversation after the meeting was, man, we need help in University Park. There's something, if there's any possibility that this can work out for us, we bringing all people to the table. Since we talking about water, see, everybody listens to the sound of this voice. We got to stop being Aqua's tail, where they, where they, where they concerned it. Their concern is they got the dollars, so think about this, if every village resident bought a thousand dollars worth of stock in shares, or the village bought shares, a hundred thousand dollars of shares of Aqua Water, then we at the table, you think they want that? You think they want, five thousand shareholders at their shareholders meeting, talking about what they're doing to the black and brown community? You think they want that? So it's time for us to look at every single way possible to fight that enemy. Because that's what they are, because they're not a humanitarian caring people. Because if there was a mistake in a breach of, they don't have the attitude or personality that they can't even work on getting the public trust back. We've asked Aqua Water to fix our swimming pool, it's right next to their pumping station. Show our residents that there's some kind of humanitarian effect, how do you get the public trust back? So since they drawing the line in the sand, we're drawing the line in the sand. But just talk to people in Joliet, Joliet has spent over a half a billion dollars going directly to Chicago. I'm going to be next week to see if there's any way that we can tap in to the Lake Michigan water that'd be going to Joliet in another five, six years. But in the meantime, we still have to work on developing our own infrastructure. Because the slavery day is over with and there's no way in the world that a six hundred and seventy-one million dollar publicly traded company such as that treats us this doggone way. Because all they're doing is concerned about their shareholders dividend checks every doggone quarter. So that, that's what's going on, so we greatly appreciate your efforts and we're going to ask you to continue our dialogue, do a assessment, see what it is, continue searching, let's continue this, we serious about doing this thing, we think way beyond our time. Because we got to plant that seed for the next generation, or we won't have anyone to take care of us. Uh, Ms., Ms. Lawson?
I think it's a, a good idea, the thought process to help residents with these pipes. Because that would be a big issue for residents to have to, you know, pay for these pipes. So I, I, I think the dialogue for that is wonderful. Uh, I too agree that Aqua has no, uh, care about us. Their care is about their, the money that they're making. I actually was in a meeting with Aqua today and expressed the very same thing that, you know, just for a matter of having, uh, good customer service, I didn't do anything to you, you did something to me. Why are you treating me so bad when I didn't do anything to cause my situation? And I think that's what a lot of residents are feeling. And we, we actually have no recourse. Now, if you have been made whole by Aqua, you don't have a problem with Aqua. But the majority of the residents in University Park have not been made whole by Aqua. And so, yes, we need to continue to bring this up, we need to think about viable ways to help the residents. I am all for this. If we have a consultant, as Donna said, who's already doing this, I don't think we need to double it. But if they are not the experts in water, I think we need to look at the people who are the experts in the water. Um, let's help the residents, is what I'm hearing. Uh, you know, when I think about me replacing those pipes, uh, I need some help to be able to do that. If we're talking, uh, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, uh, it's not in my little red, uh, duty burger. Uh, so I would need some help with that. Are you talking about, uh, the residents paying fifteen to twenty thousand?
No, Ms. Morgan, what he is saying is that it would cost the average resident maybe up to twenty thousand dollars because it's all based on the square footage of your home, because every single home would have different square footage. So you could, some may be fifteen thousand dollars or more, some may be fifteen thousand dollars or less. A, a twenty-three-hundred square foot home might be more than, uh, a thousand, uh, square foot home. So it varies and what we need to do is we need to get the people that are on the advisory, let them do their analytical work and then just continue the dialogue back and forth and let's see what we can do.
But we do need to go back to Aqua because we were told today in that meeting with Aqua that the reason they didn't go for restoring our pool is because they were asked for money. I just cut the check, it doesn't work like that.
Exactly.
Just cutting the check to University Park.
Outright lie from Aqua Water. An outright lie from Aqua Water.
We were told that right to our face.
I don't think so.
That that's why we didn't, we don't have, uh, that pool restored. And I think we need to look into that, go back to that meeting with Aqua because from what I'm understanding, they are willing to restore that pool, they're not willing to just cut the check.
Will that be restored?
I don't know what you're talking about, because I didn't hear that.
Aqua, we need to take some things from Aqua.
No, 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 we, no, we got it in black and white attorney fame that's put our demands, we'll ask for an endowment fund, we've asked for court-
From Aqua?
We've, that's not to speak to Aqua. We've asked, what we've asked Aqua for is an endowment fund. As Dr. Trusty Franklin was saying, say little Billy is six years old right now and is doing perfectly fine, but he was in that advisory and was drinking that water, was similar that was made with it, five years down the line, well, wow, he doesn't have the mental capability that he should, he's not growing, come to find out, he has traces of lead. So we've asked Aqua for an endowment fund, we've asked Aqua to restore the pool and that's an outright lie for anybody to say, we've never asked for it yet.
I'm talking, I'm talking.
Ms. Morgan, let me finish, please, because I, I got short-term memory loss, my beautiful guy. So if you ever want to help me out, give me some prejudice, alright? So, so we've asked Aqua for quarterly water sampling reports, we've asked Aqua to engage in community outreach, we've asked Aqua for a variety of things, we've asked Aqua to be a good partner, show that you concerned about our community. Uh, what else did we ask Aqua for? Uh, we asked her for a variety, quarter water sampling. We asked her for an IGA, an intergovernment agreement. Can you believe that there is no agreement with the villages of University Park and Aqua Water? There's not a contract, there's not a redevelopment agreement, there's not an intergovernment agreement, there's nothing. They have a monopoly on our community, they rise, they raise the rates by going down to the ICC, make a petition and no one dismisses it, if we don't have over five hundred people, they're not going to pay attention to us and they're going to get their way and you got to remember, that's a private water source. So they're exempt from a lot of FOIAs to find out who actually has the title or deed to the water system. We don't, we're being held hostage because they figured that gentification is real store short because we got somebody else and that's it. I grew up in Chicago, Ida B. Wells Project. Back then, it was Ida B. Wells, it was the projects and this, that and another. But all of a sudden, you start seeing crime rates going up, families starting to move and a murder here, the air hooker's doing something over here and something going on. So before you know it, all of a sudden, all the black folks gone, wow, we did just what we wanted. We got them to move out the area and guess what, we'd have took that lakefront now. Now the same building that we own, that's, that's sixty thousand dollars, is worth seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, the ground stones, the gray stones. So what I see in the long run, with the emergence of all the great things happening in our community and all the Amazons popping up, they want us out because you can still find a home in University Park with a decent price, a decent yard and good, good amenities. Ideal is to relocate it right off the ingress, egress, I-57, can take anywhere in the world. Second largest industrial park in the state of Illinois, metro station, whether you leaving in the morning, at the beginning of the line, coming home is the end of the line. We got so many great things, what a great thing to do, take this community. We're not going to do that and I think that- We're not gonna do that and I think that Aqua participates in that mannerism to chase us out here. That's my opinion, not stand by. If I died today, that would be my testimony, because I believe in it. We gonna fight for the rights of this doggone community, because they're not gonna steal our diamonds and gold. We've been hoodwinked long enough.
And how long have you been on the board?
I've been on board uh a good amount of time to have enough experience and build relationships. I served three consecutive years, twelve years consecutive as a village trustee. This is my, May fourteenth will be my third year as mayor.
And you all knew all along that I that that you didn't have nothing from Aqua.
Well, Ms. Morgan, thank you for your positivity. Thank you, guys. We'll continue our dialogue. Our last guest with the, oh, Ms. Sir?
I I just have two comments. First of all, it's thirty million dollars, not three hundred million dollars. And then second of all, uh this water system was installed back in when I was a kid. So that must have been, you know, let's just take a stab in the dark and say nineteen seventy?
Sixty.
Yeah, so that was long before any of their time.
So those pipes are just that old?
And it's what what's your name, sir?
My name is Ian Bronstein.
Alright, Mr. Bronstein, thank you very much. Thank you. Alright, our last guest.
If nothing's mistaken, thank you for catching that.
Oh, uh Mrs. Childs, go ahead. I gotta be in my.
Ms. Star, I just wanted to give you all a history of uh Aqua's community uh involved, which was none. We would go to Aqua each year um to request them to even put the water in the pool. Uh one year, I'll never forget, they told us that the uh fire hydrant, the fire department couldn't turn it on. We had to wait for Aqua to come and even do the meter. Then that last year, uh when we met with them, they offered to give us a five hundred dollar stipend or whatever to the community versus filling the pool up. So it's never been a time that we would get any uh financial assistance. And turning the water on and putting the water in there would have been a plus for us, but they would never do that. Then we would get extremely uh very high water bills. And again, we would question each and every year. So Aqua has never did anything far as the pool was concerned.
Thank you, Mrs. Childs.
You're welcome.
Dan in Teraco, let's rock and roll, guys. Thank you for your patience. Thank you, man. Thank you. Let's have this continued dialogue. I had to push you a reach out today.
Yes, yes.
Good to see you, man. Like that, ladies. Hey, man, listen, by all means, listen, let's help help us out.
Sorry, here to help you.
Alright, be help our community. Thank you.
I did three times see this issue, City of Chicago, City of Aurora, everyone has the same problem, but I'd like to help you.
Yeah, the only thing different about those and us, at least they control their water. We don't have any control. We all have nothing. Alright, Dan? So so a real brief, real brief scenario. This will be our 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 final conversation with Teraco. We have the vote. The vote, the board has already pretty much approved everything else. This is the last, uh oh, oh, they got.
Uh good evening. Uh my name is uh Dan Wander. Uh I'm one of.
Come on, Dan.
Yeah, I'm one of the principals at uh Teraco. We are partners with the OM group and um we've been before the board before to discuss um our development and Scuttle and Central um in University Park. Um we're really excited to be able to do what we think is gonna be um, you know, really a signature development for this community. We're looking at twenty-six acres on the corner. We're looking to do like.
Hey, guys, 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 please, it's nice enough outside here. Great time to talk. This is important to us as well, thank you.
Um we're doing a uh full-service travel center along with um some long-term truck and trailer parking. And then next door to that, we're looking to do a nine-hundred thousand square foot um new industrial building. Um and we've um been through sort of the entitlement process and tonight, we just wanted to briefly uh talk about an incentive package that we've been talking about in the village. So the incentive package really comes in two different components. Um for the corner piece, as it relates to the travel center, we're looking at a rebate of um the sales taxes related to that development for a period of fifteen years. And um associated with on on that part of the development, the village would be receiving a hundred percent of the real estate taxes. Um so that incentive, we'll be looking at over the fifteen years, a cap um of of five million dollars. So once we got five million dollars from the incentive during that timeframe, assuming we were able to perform in a positive way, any other additional money would go to the city and after fifteen years, a hundred percent of those revenues would be coming to the city.
Five hundred dollars for what?
Excuse me, uh let me finish, I'm just moving around, because I got a horrible cramp in my left hand.
Yeah, exactly. The nine-hundred thousand square feet, we're building that on a speculative basis. And we're looking at a ten-year um ten-year incentive there to cap the taxes at fifty cents per year. Um so basically, this relates to what the village is gonna be getting between all the real estate taxes for um different components here, we're looking at approximately a little under, starting out, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Um for the for the um, and that just then goes up every year. And then on the sales, on the sales related taxes that we're looking at, um that are gonna come back to us, it's approximately two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Um so we're looking at putting in total, in terms of both phases of our development, approximately eighty million dollars. We're looking at a cap of fifteen million dollars of the incentive, which is less than twenty percent.
It's just a twenty percent.
Less than twenty percent.
Right?
Yep, less than twenty percent. And um, you know, we're raring to go. We're hoping to be able to break ground on both, probably the industrial portion, hopefully wouldn't take place till next year, because there's a long lead time in terms of some of the items that we need to be able to do, to be able to build that out. Um but as it relates to the travel center and the truck and trailer parking, we're looking to break ground at the end of the summer, beginning of the fall.
That's what we want.
Break ground for what?
This, Ms. Morgan, okay, remember when we all had this dialogue when they came in when the board first approved? This is for the travel center that's gonna be in phases. So at their location, at University Parkway and Central Avenue, I got two developers going. Is that the northeast corner?
Yes.
On on the northeast corner. So that phase one will be their shale gas station, Jimmy John's, Dunkin' Donuts, Pizza Hut in 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 closed in in that campus area. And then next year, a couple years, every phase, and then they'll be going to the truck wash and um.
We're gonna be doing truck and trailer, long-term truck and trailer parking. And then we're gonna be building a nine-hundred thousand square foot industrial building.
What's in the build?
Uh the industrial building, this foot, we don't have a user for that.
It's it's basically, when they build an industrial building, they call that a spec building. So they'll build it to a certain specification and then they'll shop it for a tenant that's already got it. And this is not in the tip area. It's an incentive package and it's a good thing, because right now, we've got a hundred percent of nothing on that corner with grass fields.
That's where Central and Stokel?
That's where you just come off of I fifty-seven. I'll put like this.
Well, welcome, sir.
Yeah, for those who ever go on Bishop Ford or three ninety-four, you get off on Soft Trail and you see the new travel center with the Dunkin' Donuts and Jimmy John's like that, very similar to that, but this is a different vendor. This is QuickTrip. This is a quick. No, this is the same people, Mel. This is a specific. Oh, yes, they got your glasses on tonight. So so uh Trusty Lewis, anybody from the audience, residents?
Of course, that should have been built a long time ago. You know what I mean? Because uh uh you look at Monique and you look at uh three ninety-four over there uh in uh Soft Trail. Is that we're talking about something similar?
Similar, but it will be, you know, a hundred percent brand new, you know, state-of-the-art facility.
It's branded, it's all the branded.
It's nothing like Monique's here.
You got all these trucks and things and and.
Oh, all the all the facilities in all these new buildings are a hundred percent newly built town. I mean, one of the things that you're not sure or see the is, is that you probably have some of the strongest industrial bases.
How many floors?
After we're building.
In the building.
I'm sorry?
How many floors?
Just one floor. Simple story.
So the first thing that you're building is the industrial building?
No, the first thing is the travel center.
The travel center?
Travel center.
Okay, the travel center. And then the next thing is that?
That's correct.
Why the industrial first before the truck stop?
Truck stop is first. Travel center, truck stop.
I mean, the truck wash, I'm sorry, you said the truck washing station. Why not that, it's second?
Well, I think that the the main driver here is the diesel sales and the gas sales along with the with the uh with the convenience store sales that we're gonna do on the interior. And so that's gonna come first. Industrial is a little bit longer to plan and it's a separate parcel, it's like a separate owner. So we're gonna close on that a little bit later.
So we don't have people who want to be in that industry?
No, it'll probably be some kind of warehouse or manufacturing facility, probably similar to the other users that are in our corridor. You know, Amazon, Doc Foods, Clorox, George Pacific. So, you know, some kind of retailer that wants to be along this corridor.
So that has to be part of this, that has to be part of this?
It's gonna be part of the overall development, yeah. Because at some point, one of the one of the big benefits here in terms of doing this kind of a phased development, in terms of doing both, is, you know, we're gonna be investing, you know, eighty million dollars in this community. Um we'll be able to, you know, hire local residents, you know, work with the community.
That's something.
You know, in terms of any way that you can.
Minority contracting opportunities, not just. Yeah, I'm so on that DBE, MBE certification to qualify. Go ahead, Dan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we're, you know, we're, you know, this is a, this is a partnership. We've worked with many different communities and a lot of work with the city of Chicago. So all things that um, you know, we're well aware of, that are important, you know, to be able to provide services and be able to drive the tracks around and source the community. Talking tonight about all these different things that you need in the community that are important to you. Well, you know, by reading this kind of economic development, this will be a generational opportunity.
Some for the travel center was good, definitely we are free up for that. But you said the industrial part, if you're gonna build a building and you don't know who's gonna be in there, can you all make sure you know before you build it? That who's gonna wanna take on that?
The real advantage here, okay, is is that you're gonna build a state-of-the-art industrial building. So you're gonna get very, very, very high quality tenant. You know, my partners are gonna be working on this.
You're not bringing Trump out?
They're gonna, they're gonna.
You're not gonna bring Trump over here?
You gotta say something, don't you, Ms. Morgan?
I thought you said.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna invest, they're gonna invest fifty million dollars in this community to be able to find a good tenant.
Can can you um provide a breakdown of what the uh black contractors, uh.
Minority, yes, they minority.
Minority contractors, what that would be like?
Uh, you know, in terms of, in terms of committing, we don't, we don't have anybody today, but we will, we will commit, we will commit to higher proportion of the work that we're doing on our side, um as it relates to the travel center and the other part of it to have an MBEW component.
Any, any, Trusty Sharon? Trusty Song?
Uh I have one question. When you hire the contractors, are they gonna be unionized?
Are they gonna be what?
Unionized contractors.
We don't want no, in other words, we don't want no rats on a construction site.
We want to unionize contractors, you know, contractors.
You know, we wanna get the most competitive product that we can. We wanna be able to hire locally, um as it relates to that. Probably because of the extensive trucking that we're doing there, I would say that I would say that they're probably gonna be union contractors. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna necessarily be able to commit to that. Or we did commit towards the MBE component in terms of what we're doing.
As women in America, we now have awareness, just like we have.
No, there 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 was a number of great things that you talked about, because you really can't say.
I mean, this is a private contractor first. So for your purposes, when you do your own village work, you have to provide a wage. And most of the big wages, you have to raise, so almost all of those people who do it are union contractors. This is an outside private thing, so you can't dictate.
We 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 need, we need to ask and encourage and participate for the qualified skilled people, you know. But yeah, there's not a requirement that we can actually just like, you know, this way or the highway. So this is something that everybody has been part of for X amount of months, that probably is coming to a head right now, so. Any, any questions? Should we move this on, guys?
Yes, sir.
Move it on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys. Uh their motion?
Wonderful, wonderful. That was sad.
Okay, Trusty, make that. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll get it done by the end of the month and let's just look forward to, welcome to the great village of University Park.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Alright, fantastic. Trusty, make that.
You know, I'd like to say something.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am, for what you had to say. I really appreciate that. I myself, I'm from thirty-ninth and Lake Park, I understand. My whole thing that I wanna share here is, we have a lot of industrial park companies out here. Over the summer, there needs to be training programs and they need to reinvest back into University Park. They need to have training programs at those facilities, Clorox and Amazon and all these places out here to keep our youth active. They don't have to be where they're paying them, but they have people that are there in HR that can create these things. Because if they're not reinvesting in our community, that's the problem.
Exactly.
So just to say, you you can have ten, ten, ten to twenty youth come in and maybe that's two to three times out of the week, that's giving them something to do. That's showing them a trade, that's showing them that it's a possibility to have a job at this particular uh facility. That's showing them other avenues. First of all, Cremonique is not doing their job as far as the high school goes. Okay? By the way, I'm concerned, they have taken our youth and have not displayed to them that there are minority teachers that can teach at that high school. And the reason being is simply because they're getting their student loans paid off. And that's why they're allowing all these teachers to come in from the outside of Illinois, from from Indiana to come and teach in Illinois. My point is, is that they're not showing our our kids that they're a job opportunity. They're not showing them uh where the jobs are. They're not uh exploiting exploiting them to career opportunities. They're just saying, go to college.
Right.
Now, we knew when we were growing up in in Chicago, that, yeah, you should go to college and get your degree, but there are also trades.
Washburn.
High-paying trades that these kids can do. And if they, if there's a way to show them electricity, plumbing, all these uh, when they came in, they said, uh they, this consulting firm, they said that they have a program. So these are the type of things and and water, my my children go to Central State in Ohio. And they have a water program there. So these same gentlemen that are talking about this water program, that is the highest, one of the highest-paying jobs that none of our children know about. So these are the type of things that are trades that they can go into that are here. And if we can fix our own water one day.
That's it?
We don't have to depend on nobody else. But this is the thing, they don't, they never want us to be self-sufficient.
Alright.
My problem is, is that if we're going to allow them to come in and and have another industrial park, okay? They need to give something to our youth. They need to give back.
So to the village. Point well taken and 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 see.
Instead of locking them up.
And see, yeah, oh, absolutely, because we're not an advocate.
They're gonna get a camera and lock them up.
Some of them need to be sure of that, but there there's an alternative, because when she was speaking about the trades, I was a Washburn trade, Dawson Skill Center. And see, it's not really, to me, I used. And see, it's not really, to me, I used to be an advocate, college, college, college. But now it's basically about career choices. Because now, now that you mention that, we just setting up something for all of our residents. We got a state-of-the-art new IBEW, local number nine in University Park, that sits on 12 acres. So they're encouraging us to start setting up community tours where our residents can come in and start working on apprenticeships for our young people. Because they knocked on our doors saying, we ain't got no minority participation. They are the largest trainer right now in the University Park, the Chicago Transit Authority. They have a complete campus and are under construction right now, bringing motor cars and everything. Women and guys. So you might not want to go to college and be in the foot of a dick. It might not be very ready, but when you come out there, the apprenticeship program, you owe nobody a dime and you start collecting right away. So we're all funded and we like that.
When they come in, they're over here. Come in. When they go in, they come out making sixty thousand.
Same thing.
So these are trades that they're not offering our children. They're not offering it and they're not opening their doors to say, come in and we can show you. If they started the apprenticeship in their junior year of high school, Southmore at high school, they come out of school and they make their money. They not running around looking for a gun.
So, so, yeah, that, that's, that's good because what the board has done, and I got to really appreciate this board trustees, what we have done, we have initiated under ordinance, a community benefits program. Every single time that we deal with these contractors, the board may pass this, but my conversation is, it's official document, but we don't need you to, it's fine to come in here and get a return on your investment, but we don't need more investment on your side. We need to be a community partner, be engaged in our community. So we have got this program and we all passed it. So now we need to implement that and start working on it. It's in, it's there. It's, it's there. And like I told you the other day, that's how we got this Craig Park done. Didn't cost us a doggone dime. We got a skate park coming, new basketball ramps and stuff in Plum Park. Because I told the guy, the board passed everything. This didn't come legal until I put my signature on there.
I need my umbrella.
Yeah, I know. So, so now when we go down to Craig Park, a park that hasn't been touched in 20-plus or 30 years, we've got brand-new lights. We've got the infrastructure, the washrooms and the toilets and everything, a brand-new playing surface. They're going to have a paved parking lot, strike. They're taking the old dilapidated tennis court and turn it into a skate park. They're taking the old basketball courts, reasphalt it, putting state-of-the-art basketball ramps up there. Slowly but surely, we're transitioning. So we're on the right path and we need people like you with that fire, that's real. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to speak to the resident about the apprenticeship and the trade programs. I participated in a lot of Elgro Village, a lot of those seminars. And a lot of the problems that have to do with the apprenticeship programs for the youth in our community is the basic skills test. That a lot of our children and our kids in our community who would qualify for that program do not have the minimum basic skills. So my suggestion would be to have some type of seminar to make sure that they have the readiness to even apply for the apprenticeship program. Because we, the IBEW can invite us all the time, but if we, if our kids are not at the minimum board to even apply, they won't get in the program. But, 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 but I'm just saying, if the opportunity is there and we're not meeting the education requirements, if it's in our power, if that's sitting down like lean-on-me and, you know, doing all that, then that, it won't happen.
But if you're applying at Southmore Year with that test, who's not going to pass the test when they get out of high school?
Right.
Because don't they break that average standard? Everybody else is just for their children. Why can't we use that thing?
And, and, and another, another thing that I feel that we need to fix in our community, we have a fire department and there's not the diversity in there. We don't have one minority male or female fire department. So next time I call me, we'll be having a presentation by the Black Fire Brigade. The Black Fire Brigade is now establishing itself and as well-known, they are finding expedited ways to get minorities into the firefighting industry. So they have said a lot of things. Oh, ma'am, when you come in, we know that you want training. We want to see out to the community. We want to see pancake days and all that. But they saying the same old song, so we're going to find a way to make a way. Firefighters make really good money. They work 180 days a year. And the torch has been the old thing. Granny Daddy was the firefighter. Passed it down to the son. Son passed it down to other son, then Granny Son gets it. In the meantime, they out-classify it. So I would advocate for our fire department, like with Chicago. You're 18 years old, we send them to the police academy. We can send them to the fire academy, get them the same certification. So we got a lot of work to do.
With the railroad, ma'am.
Same at the railroad. Good relationship now with CNN. Since we worked, joined them, getting this railroad crossing fixed, they've got programs. So we on the right track and we just need to work together. Because see, as long as they fracture us, they win. Just like the world. The minute that we start working together, it's the biggest threat to this economy because we already spend the most money.
The biggest deal, I got to say this, the biggest deal with the fire department is you must ask EMS. You got to ask EMS. You got to do EMS. If you don't do EMS, EMS, then you can't be a fighter. And that's what people don't know.
We got, we got a couple of messages from the trustees and we're going to get out of here and enjoy the night evening. Trustee McFadden, please. Speak into the mic like you're singing at church.
First of all, I would like to say earlier, uh...
No, no. Give me a little juice. Give me a little juice, man, please. Before your tap, your iPad goes out, you have your outside voice ready?
Yes.
Okay, well, go ahead, go ahead, trustee. Now he got to look at the gloves.
Okay. First of all, Mildred Morgan made a statement earlier that the children don't have anything to do. Well, I would like to make a, let you know about something that is positive with our kids. Congratulations to my son, Arthur Lee McFadden III and the 41 other students from Creek Moni High School for being inducted into the National Honor Society on Thursday, May 5, 2022, at Creek Moni High School. Congratulations to all the kids. Secondly, I would also like to thank Keely Childress for all of her help and hard work that she has done over the years with the kids and the village of University Park. I have lived here for 22 years and my three children have all had the pleasure of being involved in the sports of soccer, cheerleading, basketball, football, and baseball. And interacting with Keely, Keely says she was the director of the Park and Recreation Department. Recently, Keely planned and organized with the help of others the basketball awards program and the job fair for the village. She always makes sure we are informed of what is going on in the village so we can share it with others. Keely is awesome and I would just like to thank her for she, for all that she does for us and to let her know how important she is to us in the village of University Park.
Thank you very much. Trustee Jenkins?
Um, I would also, I would like to also thank Ms. Keely for the award that she gave me. Unfortunately, I couldn't go to the basketball program because of my dad. But thank you, it's in my, on my little shelf. Thank you, thank you, thank you. But I also would like to say something about baseball. And the two ladies that have, it takes a team, so I can't say just the two ladies. It's a whole team of us that has had work and not like me, but they have really put their hard work into this program. I mean, unreal. And I just have to ask them to stand up, Ms. Donna Dilworth, Ms. Mildred Morgan, and Ms. Robin Walker, along with Cynthia Hill, David Savier, Greg Barxdel, and the countless others that have put in a lot of hard work in getting this organized. We were fortunate to have H&R Block and Next Door Neighbor to join us in the cleanup of Regal Farm. They came out with a food truck, T-shirts, and everything that we needed and also donated all of the paint, all of the brushes, anything that we thought we needed. They supported this baseball organization. And I just have to say thank you for all of their hard work, all their effort and everything that they do for the children here in University Park. So yes, we have to always know that if we don't have a lot, we can make do with what we have. And I am so grateful to them. And I just want to know that we're going to have another cleanup. We're going to have a painting party. So those who can come on out and help us paint Regal Farm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If no one else, do I have a motion? Motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Motion by trustee. Do a second by trustee Bowden and trustee McFadden give the tie. So put them both on there. And vote call, Madam clerk. I thank you guys for coming out. We're going to have more positive workshops and let's get engaged. Let's work together. Let's beat the odds. Let's win.